Can we rise to the floor, please? For the reasons of the life of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open the meeting up to last public comment. Okay, we move to personnel. If you have an issue taking personnel out of a block from A through E, it looks like. A through E. And if you have any need or any recognition, we'll do that afterward. I don't have a question. Make sure to go. Can I add a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Heather. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Any objections?
So carried. Mr. President, I know that we have Stacy Malero here. This has been, I believe, it's been a dream job to be in our flex program. I've seen her many times subbing in that room, and she just really connects with the kids. It's huge. They love her, she loves them, and I think it's gonna be a great, a great fit and a great partnership that we'll have with Stacy. So welcome Stacy to the team.
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you for this opportunity. I really appreciate and looking forward to the next, however many years I'm around, to be with this family, this class, and other kids that come through. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Congratulations to your son also.
Oh, thank you also.
That's my children. Let's screw it up.
Okay, so since the last time I've seen you, there hasn't been too much going on, but I found a few things to talk about. So, the Highland High School, Harley Plains, put on a fantastic show, The Little Mermaid. I don't know if you guys were able to go and see it, and I saw you there. But it was great. A lot of kids were talking about it. I know some teachers offered extra credit for it. But the students kind of went in with like a hesitant attitude, but they all came out and they're like, oh my gosh, this is amazing. And they all loved it. And then there was also a semifinal section game in Marlboro, and a lot of students showed up for it. And I was actually kind of surprised, because you know, it's kind of a way. But a lot of students showed up for it, and even at the end of the game, there's a lot of positive reinforcements to the players, even though we lost. And it was great to see that good intentions for them, and I know there was a few people that said congratulations to the other team. And then I also heard a lot of students talking about the great experience they had at the Woodstock School of Art. One of the students here, Skylar Johnson, actually has his art displayed over there, which is pretty fantastic. And then there are some upcoming trips and events being planned, and I can't wait to share them with you guys. That's it.
Questions? Do you have a choice in terms of?
There is.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody have anything for? Okay, business and operations, health and welfare contract. Houston City School District, be resolved, board of education, fund recommendation, the superintendent approves the following 2018-19 health and welfare contracts for five students, in force of $989. First student for a total of $4,945. The Houston City Schools District authorizes the board president and district clerk to approve the contract. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Az. Second.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Discussion? All of the favor? Close? So carried. And now our budget discussion for 2019-2020.
Is this Lisa coming to do the slide show?
You just hit F5.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the very person we will review, and we have this mick here. I didn't pronounce your name.
Sorry, Kathy's just fine.
Kathy. Going to go over transportation. There we go. Okay. As always, we're here where the kids, students are of priority. And we take that into account when we create our budget for the upcoming year, and our existing budget, through why we're here. Okay. I hope that everybody can read this. It's, there are handouts right here if you folks would like some. Basically, this is a slide that you had last year. And all I did was update it, confirm the information was accurate. So as you can see, we have all the years from 2009 to 2018. The type of vehicle, Suburbans, wheelchair, 2029 or 30 passenger vehicles, and 65 passenger vehicles. The total number purchased in each year, and the dollar amount spent each year on those purchases. The totals on the bottom represent the number of vehicles in our district inventory. So we currently have six Suburbans, two wheelchair buses, 11 30 passenger vehicles, 27 large buses, for a total of 46. Okay? Everybody good? Hello?
You're not, like if you were knocking on the door.
Oh, thank you. So based upon the recommendation, Kathy and Peter, we sat down and we reviewed our inventory. And currently, the recommendation for the bus referendum for May 21st is three 30 passenger buses, two seven passenger Suburbans, and one wheelchair bus. And the cost here includes all safety and communications equipment. The grand total for the proposition would be $375,760. And Kathy, can you address why these buses are being recommended for the proposition?
Yes, I will. So, we currently have two wheelchair buses, one we purchased last year. There are other one needs to be replaced. It is actually this month, the last couple of days of being in DOT, and it'll be a safety issue. DOT will not pass it after, you know, it will not go up for DOT this month. It'll be done. So that means we don't have a spare wheelchair bus if something should happen to this one, or we need to use it for another event within the school, or our bus that we have now needs to go for DOT. You need a backup, so we do need another wheelchair bus. Our Suburban 144 is, has 173,000 miles on it, so, and that's 12 years old. It's at its capacity, so this'll finish up. It's being DOT this month, so it may last another year. And then we need to outsource that.
Excess.
Excess, yes. So that's where our Suburbans will have some spares then. Our 30 passengers, we had 160 is a regular 30 passenger bus. The motor has gone in that, so we outsourced that as well. So one of those are gonna replace that 160 bus, and then we'll have two more 30 passengers. Which means that when our other buses are up for DOT, we'll have enough spares. And we can use some of those for sports where we don't have a lot of children. That would be an asset to us that would save money, actually. I know it sounds kind of strange buying a brand new bus. But there are like wrestling trips that if we can't use a Suburban, because there is more, can use a 30 passenger. Or any more, anything with the flex, we can use those as well. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. With a, how many kids do we normally have on a 65 passenger bus?
Well, it's funny you should ask that, because I've been riding all the buses, and we are not filled to capacity, all the buses. Which, as you guys know, for safety, that's fantastic. But we do have to keep enough seats for kids that are even car riders or go to a babysitter. So we're averaging 40, 30 to 40 kids on a bus, which is really a great thing, for a lot of safety reasons.
These, none of these are gonna be with the new gas or the hot oil gas?
No, these will all be gas.
I would anticipate in the 2021 school year, coming forward to the board, asking the board to consider the 65 passenger bus replacements in that year.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, or, yes, that is, that's correct.
So we're safe this year or not? Are we taking a chance that we're safe not having?
No, we're good. You're safe with this, yes.
Does that put us behind on replacements with those 65, because that's always my concern, is we are trying to get onto a routine.
That was my question. We have schedule that we were operating from.
Yes.
Is this consistent with that?
I do not have the whole answer for that. I will ask Pete. But according to when me and Pete had this conversation on replacing these, we were on schedule for everything.
So currently, as you know, we have 46 vehicles. Okay? If you go back to those slides previously, there we go.
Right.
All right. So, basically, it's so simple. All you do is you take your overall fleet, and you divide it by the number of years of which you wish to replace. The recommendation is every 10 years. Okay? That's what SED recommends. Every 10 years, you look at turning over your fleet. So you take your buses, you divide it by 10, and that way you know how many buses you're going to buy a year, until the next 10 years, and then you do it all over again. It's very simple. What it doesn't account for is the wear and tear on the vehicles, any new students moving in or out. And now we're finding we have more homeless children that we need to shuttle back and forth, according to the new law, fostered students. So it may be simple math for me, say, okay, 46 divided by 10, we can replace five buses a year. But it doesn't take into account the external factors.
The runs have been changing a little bit in the past couple of years. We've got new, different populations.
Right.
We have a lot of increase in special runs, you know, where you're just taking smaller machines. That's why we're looking at Suburbans instead of getting more, you know, larger buses.
I guess for me, I just don't wanna see that, you know, that roller coaster cycle effect. If you go back to 2016, we're almost a million dollars in buses.
Right.
Then we went to 750, then we went to 588, now we're down to 375. Now, next year, we're gonna start climbing back up again. And at some point in time, you come to us and say, hey, we need X amount of buses now, it's gonna be a million dollars.
You're right, but I remember the discussion with the schedule. It did come out to, on the average, you're behind five buses a year. Also, if you can get away with a Suburban, you know, that might land a little lower. But there might be years where you're replacing five 60 passenger, and that's gonna hit a little heavier. But it is, it is consistent with the average of around five buses per year. The only thing this doesn't state is the generous aid we get for transportation, right?
60%.
So of this 375,000 number, 60% of that will be funded by state aid.
Over five years.
Over five years.
The state amortizes the buses over five years.
Kathy, I, you know, disagree, and I just wanna make sure that you're comfortable, that your department's comfortable, because I'm looking at wheelchair vehicles. We've only bought two wheelchair vehicles in 10 years. And now we're purchasing one this year. Is that sufficient?
This year, yes.
It's like one's going out of service real soon, and you all have a backup.
Yeah, we only have two wheelchairs at all times. I will tell you, I know next year for a projection, you know, according to what me and Pete talk about, there will be big buses purchased for the next. It's not gonna be, you know, like seven, you know, this morning.
I'm thinking it's gonna be around six.
Yeah, I mean.
We bought 15 in the last year.
Right, yeah, it's not gonna, that's not, that. You have your. Yeah, you have, right now, your older buses are your 155, 154, 153, are like your oldest buses now? I'm sorry, I don't have the year with me.
I do. I've got a bus number 150, was purchased in 2011. It's a large bus. It's at 95,000 miles on it. That's pretty darn good.
Yeah, so that's what we're saying. So like next year, those 150s, the last three or four that they have, we're packing the miles on them now. Because those are gonna be the next three going.
Right.
All right, so does that help any? And I don't know what the numbers are for this school, you know, we're just doing kindergarten. Homeless and special needs is a really big thing, so to get an even balance, like this year, we may have a lot of special needs buses that need to go far. Next year, no, and it depends what we can do. I have a really good rapport with Marlboro, who was at a district, to green chimneys. There's always the option of sharing those runs. It saves money on all of us. The homeless, the same thing. I talk to the parents. I have a good rapport with some districts that can help us out, all the way to Ellenville. I guess you guys just have to trust me and know that I'm a good talker to them, and if something really comes up, that it's a crazy amount of distance, we can work with it.
Well, we do share our, excuse me, our athletic gymnastics with New Paltz. And that works out very well.
Swimming, swimming with Marlboro as well.
So we try to look at how much we can share also.
So we are, we have a really great team. Linda knows people, we talk to people to see if, how things are going, if we can share a ride. Like we said, for Marlboro and for New Paltz, we all work well together, in all the districts.
This is a tough question to ask.
Yes.
If a student is homeless, how long do we support them in that scenario, transportation wise?
Whatever the school district mandates are, because I know that's a law now that we have.
McKinney, yeah.
Yeah, right, but. I guess, I'm glad you brought it up, but I guess the question is, what are the limits? Could you go five years?
I gotta be honest, I have no answer to that one.
Two years is a five. What's the limit to that?
I don't think there's a limit.
As long as they're designated as homeless, it could be a long time. Generally, it's about, about, what is it, like 90 miles or something like that.
Yeah, I do know.
Listen, I wanna support families in need. We certainly know we do. The question is, is the community's money? So that homeless designation has to work both for the family and for the school. In these situations, if the student is successful, wonderful. And we'll have to really talk through how, how long that can continue.
Generally.
But if the student is failing year after year, is that the best situation for the child and for the school?
I would say that, and I don't know the ins and outs of every single homeless family that we have. But many of the homeless families, it's not more than a year that we're doing. I mean, a lot of times, it's either finishing out the year and starting the next one. They move to a different district. I mean, they actually do end up moving and moving their children to that district. I would not say that we have a large population of students who are designated as homeless that have been in our district for five years, designated as homeless. So I mean, and that designation can be fluid too.
But are we providing specialized transportation for that moment?
We have to provide the transportation for as long as that child has been designated as homeless. So it might be for one week. It might be for several months. And this is a federal law that the school district needs to abide by.
Which we certainly do.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
And the family has the choice of whether they would rather be in the district where they are placed, or in the original.
Stay in there.
So I can.
Just as an exercise, and I know it's sensitive, and it could be shared in whichever way, the superintendent, the board president, you know, decide whether we say. Can we just check what the longest standing homeless designation is in the Highland Central School District?
I could just give you a little bit of information on that. So I came here in June. We had one family for last school year. They now are moved to another district. Okay? So we went to Beacon, that was the furthest. They are, found a home in Monticello now. And there's a family in Poughkeepsie that has found a home as well. We do have one homeless kid.
So those are ones that we're not providing a service.
Right, they have just recently, and we only have, the furthest we go right now is.
We're gonna get too detailed here. I understand, within your current comfortable, but. We'll find that out for you.
Thank you.
And we do work hard to ensure that these students aren't homeless and that they are within our district. We do a lot more work on that.
So, we are looking at the March 19th Board of Education meeting to present this language before the board. So that way it can be placed on the proposition for the May 1st vote. I think the March 19th meeting is the last meeting, Lisa, Lisa? Yeah, okay.
Well, it's April 2nd.
Well, I think the propositions have to be.
Well, the legal notice has to go in like April 2nd, so by the time you get.
A week, safety, and that's.
I would say March 19th, because the legal notice is due by April 2nd or that week.
Well, because one year we missed a deadline, we lost the proposition, so I wanna make sure we're there. If we have to adopt that this evening, we can do it, I think if everybody's okay.
April 1st is the New York State budget deadline, okay, that's the state.
Budget deadline, not proposition. Transportation feels that's sufficient, we can go ahead and talk about that.
This language is from the term.
That's the proposition language.
March, okay, no, this is just your thing.
It should have until.
You would need a resolution.
I think I know you need it by April 2nd.
Over comfortable, that's not our deadline, we're, we have a snowstorm, we don't have a meeting. Some of them bound Tuesdays.
Kathy? And that's, that's it for the, for the transportation.
I guess just lastly on that, I know we talked about, it makes sense in terms of, you know, over 10 years, you have 46 vehicles in the fleet. Over 10 years replacing, it comes out between four and five a year. I guess my concern is really just that 65 passenger bus, but if you guys are saying, obviously, we trust, you know, I trust what you guys are saying. But I know in the past few years that I've been on the board, we have always pointed to 2013, where we didn't replace any 65 passenger buses. And that has haunted us for a number of years. That I don't wanna be coming back saying that 2019, we didn't replace any 65 passenger buses, and it's coming back to haunt us. So I've heard 13 out there for a number of years, and just wanna make sure that we're not putting ourselves in that same position. If next year, we're looking to replace, say, six buses, because I think that's why in 2016, we replaced seven.
So I just did a real down and dirty calculation. Like I said, you know, how many years do we wanna replace? And it looks like next year, we would, 2021, we'd be looking at six, 65 passenger buses.
Six.
Right, which is a lot. Why wouldn't we do, why wouldn't we even that out a little bit, because we're so low this year? Because, I mean, 2016, replacing seven of those passenger buses, that was, I can say, didn't make me sleep easy every night, just saying that we were definitely gonna get that. I get that we have the 60%, you know, state aid on that, but.
Yeah, I mean, you and Al, I think, are talking about the same thing, trying to smooth out those payments, so, you know.
It doesn't mean we have to get rid of.
I don't know.
Not on the list, man. Get more of it. Well, we got two weeks, so.
Would you go back and revisit it, but I feel comfortable with what Pete and Kathy have come up with.
No, I don't doubt that, but I mean, you just said six.
Six for 2021.
That's two years.
Two years.
Next year would be what we presented, the 375,000.
Oh, so you're talking about, when we're here a year from now, we're gonna be possibly talking about six, 65 passenger buses.
Yes.
I think we should revisit that, and we'll just, just think about it. I mean, getting 60, 60% back of state aid, and that could go away, who knows? And the increase in the vehicles from now till next year could be over six, could be another.
Okay, so with that goes debt service, because they, we don't buy them for cash. So I'm just saying that your debt service for next year's budget will reflect that. I haven't practiced that in yet. So you would look at buying one additional 65 passenger bus this year, and leave it five for 2021?
That's the idea.
Yeah.
You know, you, you paid.
Unless the.
$112,000 last year.
For 65,000?
Yes.
Unless we're overthinking, only because you would let us know, is this just a negligible amount when it comes to a $45 million budget? I mean, because we're looking at that 375, it's jumping over the page.
No, it's negligible. Divide that by five. There's your yearly payment, plus interest. That, you know, I think is what, 75,000 a year?
So there could be a couple hundred thousand dollar swing, depending on the bus.
But next, we wanna buy. For six buses.
And it's negligible, really, to the average individual, because you're spreading it over.
700,000 proposition next year.
Close.
700 plus. Ship one bus to each year. The other buses, we'll bring that back up to that eight or 900,000, where we were for years ago. That's what I'm talking about that.
Which we said we were behind it, and we were trying to catch up. So I don't know why we want to get ourselves into a position to have to catch up.
Roll the coaster back.
So would you like us to sharpen our pencils and come back on the 19th?
I would say just revisit, just revisit it and see if you have any thoughts about changing that proposition at all.
All right, Kathy?
Whenever you come back, we're all good with that.
Okay, great. Okay, so this is, I feel like this is my first budget presentation here, and there's really not a lot that I can tell you right now, unfortunately. I've been here five months, and I've spent a lot of time digging behind the numbers. And believe it or not, I'm still digging behind those numbers. I feel like I find out something new every day. Whether it's a salary, or a stipend, or a bus. So thank you for having patience with people. But I don't have patience with myself. I feel like I need to be further along. Now with that confession, it's today, it's back to today. Here we go, with the mission statement, student's priority, once again. I just wanted to give you a brief synopsis of where we are. So on the 31st, you know that he released his numbers, and we've been reviewing them. On February 19th, you had your first presentation regarding state aid and revenues. On March 1st, you can see my check marks, I did submit the property, excuse me, the tax calculator to the state on the tax levy limit. Doesn't mean that it can't be changed. I think we're gonna have a little bit more information that will be changed, especially about bus purchases, because that's debt. On March 5th, tonight, we talked about the transportation, and now we're going to talk about administration's budget proposals. So the administrators have been revereing the priority, priorities for the 1920 budget. Again, I'm just gonna talk about the revenue sources, and Mr. Bon Jovi will be reviewing the administrators' prior orders. The total revenue sources right now for 1920 are 44.3 million, which is $926,000 less than the prior year. Now that's based on the calculated tax levy of $28.2 million. Now that's based on the calculated tax levy of twenty-eight point two million, an increase of two hundred seventy-seven one oh four, and our state aid decrease of one point three million dollars. That directly relates to building aid, okay? So you know, a budget is basically two books. You have your revenue side, which is one book, and you have your expenditure side, which is your other book. The two of them have to come together and agree. And that's what we're striving by doing. By March nineteenth, those books will have come together, okay? So right now it shows we're going down from the prior year budget by nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. What you don't have is the expenditure book, which will also be decreasing by debt service, okay? The debt service is going down about one point five, one point eight million dollars. So there's a corresponding negative in the expenditure side.
So we should interpret that as, in order to maintain our program, we need to find one point three?
Okay.
Okay.
That's correct. I haven't finished flushing out all of the expenditures on this side of the book. I have with this, but not the expenditures. So on the nineteenth, you'll see where we wind up. Again, this one point three related directly to building aid. We have debt that was retired. We're not going to have that expense on this side, okay? Is everybody with me, or did I just confuse everybody? I'm sorry, I'll need to.
We're good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, every year we talk about, you know, certainly the board, we want to have the conversation about, well, what's the district's request, proposals? So you can call it what you want, you know, these are, if we didn't get anything else, the district would, you know, the train would keep rolling. I don't want anyone to, you know, panic and see these things like, oh my goodness, you know, we're still short money, and you're asking for all these things. No, some of these are, you know, kind of in a perfect world, almost like Santa's wish list, you know, these are some of the things that we need, that we would operate a, we'd have an improved educational program with these items. And some of them are things just to kind of note, so that perhaps in a year, or two, or even three years, it's not something you're seeing for the first time. We never mentioned that we needed that. No, 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 we've been kind of, we've been talking about it for a little while now. So I just want, we wanted to go over a little bit and talk about some of these items. So the first one, it's our, it goes in order. So if we, if the monies were available, the administration, we met, you know, the cabinet, we feel that a technology teacher at the elementary school would be the top priority. Now, this item, we have not yet replaced, just because we haven't been able to find a suitable candidate, the teacher aid. So you have that teacher aid salary already budgeted in. With the teacher aid salary, and with, you know, breakage from retirements, you probably, you have the money in the budget to get a teacher at the elementary school, so that. Because right now we have, you know, we're building, we're starting to build our programs. We have things, we have a lot going on in middle school, we've made improvements in high school. There's nothing at the elementary school, which is where it has to start, with some of the basics, you know, skills for, for technology. So we would recommend a technology teacher at the elementary school. And the students, all students would rotate through that. Then we talked about a school psychologist. Again, I had given you the justifications for this previously. This is currently, our school psychologists have to do the CPSE IEPs, but the state is changing that, so that, the state used to provide some of these services. Now we have to do it. So it is increasing the load of the school psychologist. Speech pathologist, part-time, again, just pretty case loads of our two's, pathologist is increasing, and we have seen, there's a notable increase in these caseloads for the speech pathologist, he would certainly assist if we got another speech pathologist. Number four, the special education teacher. We did transfer a special ed teacher to the high school from the elementary school two years ago. Now this is still preliminary conversations, the numbers aren't set. It might end up that we don't need the special education teacher next year. We might also be able to kind of, you know, move some, you know, kind of move some people around.
Seems as if, if nothing changes from right now, we probably don't need that special education teacher. However, you know, as with, as with any, anything in special education, you know, that, that can change if we have families that move in or whatever.
Really, numbers five and six, the half-time guidance counselor and the social worker. And that really, you know, to alleviate the loads of the school psychologists, the other social workers for counseling. But certainly, every school, every district has seen an increase in mental health. That certainly is a focus, education on the, you know, mental wellbeing of students. A technology network specialist, you know, we keep adding and updating our syst, adding new.
Devices.
Devices, we're updating our systems, but, you know, they could use additional help in that area to maintain those systems. A transportation, that is an additional person in Kathy's office to really assist, you know, busy times, times of emergency. But transportation is running at its optimum. Finally, the point four, social studies teacher, that's at the middle school. Again, that's last, because that might be something we can do with current staff, especially with the six-period stipend. So you might be able just to take care of that without, without any additional staff. So again, you know, there are nine things here. We can probably do at least two of them with current staff, if not more. Probably three are, so it really kind of takes down about six things. But again, it goes back to, you can't have everything. We would recommend a technology teacher. Like, we don't expect any, you know, really, at the end of the day, the board is adopting a budget with a total number on it. So if we, and when we do adopt that budget with a final number, you know, if that, if within that number, we could fit in the technology teacher, that would be our recommendation.
Speech pathologist, is that across the board, is that elementary?
Be across the board, and part of that is with the addition of our program at the high school, that's increased our speech needs, you know, across the district. And so again, we're kind of holding our own right now. But an additional person would allow a little bit more flexibility with some, I don't want to say preventive, but maybe early intervention kinds of things.
So now, more than mandated service you want?
At this point, more than mandated, as always with all of these kind of services, related services. One or two students can make a difference, but one way or the other. But no, that was, it's not for mandated services at this point.
The same with psychologists as well?
The psychologist, that is an increase because of the preschool special education needs. What changed with that is previously, the county did most of the work for our preschool students. They found the programs, they did a lot of the testing and the screening of those students. The state has basically said that the county is not to do that, that the students are, our students are district students. And so that, that will increase our workload for our, our school psychologists quite a bit. So currently, the way it's distributed is our elementary school psychologist also does the CPSE, and, but then we have a little crossover, so our middle school's school psychologist comes down and does fifth grade, and then our high school person does our high school, as well as all of our out-of-district placements, which involves site visits and, and work off-site, quite, you know, at a decent amount of time. And so this, the added psychologist, the kind of long-range plan would be the CPSE, which, and Patrick will be able to act, who is obviously better, I don't know the number of students that we have at the preschool level, but it's fairly high. They would do that and might possibly pick up our out-of-district placements as well, so that we could have someone full-time actually in the high school.
Maybe for the preschool, I mean, we're talking about thirty kids?
That sounds reasonable to me, with the numbers that I've seen.
Just seeing the reports.
Yeah.
This would be a perfect, if there was a way to get a shared service with VOSEs. So the law prohibits, what if the county said, look, we still want to do it?
Patrick would probably be the better person to talk about that, because I'm just kind of telling you what he's told me, I don't know that well enough.
But I don't think they have to do it. I don't think they want to do it.
And with the guidance counselor at the high school, so there's already three, one, two, eight, nine, so with this one, so it'd be, I guess, two, so you have the, ten, eleven, twelve, two that do that, you'll have the eight, nine, and this additional part-time?
So the idea would be that the out, the part-time person that we have here would be paid full-time. And would be, again, increased support for the day-to-day, you know, beyond the counseling and, pardon me, beyond the scheduling and, and all of that, would be the day-to-day.
Yeah, counseling needs.
Yeah, right.
School counseling is a pretty broad area.
Yes.
The created position last year in high school for the technology integration, and that individual retiring, where the position's the OKR would be.
We posted that already, yes.
We have one for children.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely. Which is why, which is why, to me, the technology teacher at the elementary school, we're really talking about twenty-first century.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't burning one of the bridges while we're.
No, 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 I would like to have all of our bridges not burning. I'd like to be able to go right over.
So again, there's no decisions to be made tonight. This is just, you know, just some information to kind of soak that in and think about it a little bit. As we get, you know, as we get on the nineteenth, we'll have a much better idea of which ones we can, we can do, if I have a better idea about the special ed teacher also. So upon nine items, you know, again, these are, this isn't really a one, meant to be a one-year plan. And this is really, this is like a three to five-year plan. This is what the district is going to need. You know, it probably will not change a whole lot over the next couple of years. These are the items that, that we need. So, you know, we have a vision, and if we can, out of nine things, you know, take care of two or three of them possibly, that would be tremendous.
Do we see, please, do we see the potential for additional state aid, the government budgets?
Well, I heard that controllers in Applebee had been requested by the governor to update his numbers as far as taxes coming in and state revenues. I have not heard anything today regarding those updated numbers. I anticipate we should hear something by the end of the week. The clock is ticking, you know, today's March fifth, they've got twenty-five more days to wrap it up.
And we don't have to have our budget by law adopted until the end of May fourth.
April twenty.
I just pulled up the timeline.
April twenty-fifth, I believe, is the last day.
Yeah, I just pulled up the timeline. And you're fine with the buses waiting on that? What was it said here?
It's the day before the property tax report card is due, and that's April twenty-sixth, so it'll be the twenty.
Okay, so that, right, because the twenty-ninth is when the property tax report card is due.
Whatever that.
So we have, yeah, hopefully.
You do?
Yeah.
You do. You have time. But the time is.
Yeah.
So when we come back on the nineteenth, I'll have any more information on this book, the revenue book, and I should have complete information on the expenditure stuffy, okay? And if there's any difference, I will let you know that, right? That's it. Thank you.
Sarah?
Not too many big things to report, other than I'm sure Tom will talk about this a little bit more, but we had a very successful snowball last Saturday. It was a very nice evening. I think the best part was honoring our two new Hall of Fame alumni, as well as our Husky Pride winner. And again, I'll let Tom talk about that more. But we had, it was a great evening, we really, we had a good time. It was nice to be seeing so many people supporting our, our district. Tomorrow and the following Wednesday will be our annual scholarship concerts. Tomorrow night is the choral concert, and the following Wednesday is our band concert. So please, and if you're able, it's always a good evening. We've shifted the chorus concert, it's going to be in the auditorium. And so we've shifted the times like we did for the winter concert. So the elementary school will be first, we'll have a brief break so that families can shift in and out, hopefully, of the auditorium. Certainly a much better space for choral music especially. We will not be doing the same thing for the band because of all the stuff and all that. They'll still be in the gym like we've always done before, but. So, so we're trying something new, but hopefully it will be as smooth as the winter concert was. Tom and I just returned this morning from the Niskus Winter Institute, New York State Council of Schools Superintendent's, the Winter Institute. That was a, a great couple of days. Really, I would say many, over half of the different sessions were focused on social emotional learning, mental health and wellness. So we definitely came away with some thoughts for, for things to do in Highland. We're going to be in the cabinet tomorrow to discuss those a little bit more, so we can hear more about that. They were handing out pins and posters with kind of the theme of championing all students everywhere. I thought that was a great, just a great slogan. We'll be, we'll be seeing some of the posters around, we grabbed some of those from the district. Marielle and Aleah spoke this morning, she always finishes out the institutes, and almost a direct quote from her was, we need to break away from the total emphasis on math and ELA, that social emotional learning, mental health, wellness, all of these things are very important to the success of our students. We can't just focus on the numbers. So I think I had mentioned when we went in the fall, in September, that she again had spoken a lot about state, school safety, as well as social emotional learning. So she's definitely continuing that, that conversation. That being said, I do want to give you a look at some of our math and ELA numbers from last year's state tests. But I'm going to make this a little bit interactive. So if you could take a highlighter. Lisa?
Yes.
When I get down to you, can I, I forgot to send a couple? So the first page is actually regions results. I want to start with this, because we look at regions results a little bit differently than we do three through eight results. And what I did is I set it up, not only Highlands to ours, but how they compare to the rest of Charleston County and Marrow. And with regions, we really look at the passing rates. So these are the numbers that you see here. For instance, under Highland, ELA, we had an eighty-eight percent passing rate for the students who took the eleventh-grade ELA regions last year. So that's the number that you see in the white ELA box all the way across for each of the schools in Ulster County, the districts in Ulster County. Now though, it's not just a one-shot test. You only, it's only one ELA test, but what you need to look at there is the two thousand fourteen cohort. But what you need to look at there is the 2014 cohort. So these are the students who started high school in 2014 and graduated last June. So in their four years at Highland, this would be their passing rate for the ELA test. So we have a ninety-three percent passing rate. So why is there a difference between those two numbers? Because a student has the opportunity to take the test multiple times. So, so some of those students would have taken the test their senior year as well, and they passed. Keep in mind, they do need to pass the ELA regions exam to graduate. So now doing the same thing, moving down into our math subjects, there are three math regions exams. Algebra one, which is typically in ninth grade, geometry, which is typically tenth grade, and algebra two, which is typically eleventh grade. Our advanced students in middle school would be finishing that little sequence in their sophomore year. You only need one math regions, you only pass one in order to graduate. We encourage our students to take at least two years, if not four years of math. We work really hard on that. But we certainly have fewer students that take algebra two than take algebra one. So again, these are our scores as of last school year. Seventy-one percent passed algebra one, seventy-nine percent passed geography. Geometry, algebra two, ninety-seven percent passed that. But again, the cohort, they only needed to pass one math regions exam. So that ninety-three percent means that ninety-three percent of our students passed at least one of those. Same thing in, in, in science. You only need one of those to graduate. There's biology, chemistry, and physics. Again, most of our students take biology. Many of our students take chemistry. We tend to have more students taking chemistry than almost anywhere else in Ulster County, partly because we do not currently offer earth science. Although that is changing next school year. And physics, you have fewer students that take it, although again, we do have a pretty large number of our students that take physics. Again, for the cohort, ninety-five percent of students passed their science. Global history, that is another required regions exam, all right, ninety-three percent passing. U.S. history, that is required regions exam. So you need to pass four regions exams in order to graduate. ELA, sorry, five. ELA, one math, one science, global history and geography, and U.S. history. So we have very good passing rates. You can look later, we're not going to highlight anything on this. You can look later at how we compare to most other districts, especially when you look at the cohort. We compare, well, with, with the rest of Ulster County. It really, in my opinion, is better to look at the cohort rather than an individual year necessarily, but you can do that however. And then if you look at our graduation rate down at the bottom, as you know, last year, we were top in the county, ninety-six percent graduation rate. This year, we dropped a little bit to eighty-eight percent. We have pretty small numbers, so one or two students that didn't graduate in four years can impact that number fairly significantly. We do tend to have, I didn't put it on here, but we do tend to have a pretty high completion when you look at five-year rates or six-year rates. We really try to keep the students with us as long as we can to get them to that graduation mark. So we'll talk, we can talk more about this at other times. This is information that our department chairs and our departments are looking at, and certainly they're looking at their specific regions exam on a more granular level. So now, the next sheet is our three through eight. And this would be the students who took the three through eight exams in April and May of 2018. So I want to orient you on this. So we have two, the top chart there is ELA. Notice that I wrote it in the far right-hand column. So those are ELA scores. The bottom set is our math scores, all right? So what I'd like you to do with your highlighter right now is to go through and just highlight the cell under the district that had the highest rate of proficiency in each of those subgroups. So for instance, if you're looking at all students in the first box there, and you go along, you would hit, you would highlight Antioa. So, and do that for the rest of the subgroups. Just look carefully. I've done this three times with three different groups, and I miss somebody almost every time, or miss one almost every time. Yep, just do the top right now. So, a couple of things I wanted you to notice by doing this. One of them is to, to look at the low proficiency kind of all the way across the board. I mean, our highest numbers are at fifty percent in Ulster County. If you compare that to state numbers, which if you go to the state report card, you can play around with this a lot. Nobody in the state, well, I can't say nobody, so I didn't check everyone, but very few people are up in the like even seventy-five, eighty, ninety percent proficient. And especially in areas like students with disabilities. You look, the highest on here is thirteen percent as a state. That's an area that we really need to look at. I didn't put all of the subgroups on here. These were ones that were the most concerning or interesting to us, I think, in Highland when we look at this. But the other thing I would like you to, to look at, you highlighted what was the top in each, in Ulster County. For ELA, if you look at this, the next one, the runner-up, it's Highland in almost every category for ELA. And I'm very proud of that. And, and the reason is because Antioa is the only other district in Ulster County that's using Teachers College with fidelity. That's the program, the reading program that we have been implementing. This is our third year really of implementation. Maybe the second and a half of really full implementation. And our numbers are not far, far away from where Antioa is. So I, I really look at that as evidence that we're moving forward, that the work that we are doing is, is having an impact on, on all of our students. If you break these down by specific grade levels, rather than lumping everyone together in grades three through eight, our third, fourth, and fifth grade are at the top in many of the categories in Ulster County. You know, that tells us we need to look at our middle school work. But again, I'm very happy with the work that we're doing at our, our elementary school with our Teachers College work. So you can take more time to look at this a little bit more closely and, and see how we compare. But I, like I said, I was very pleased with, with this as I started to, to put the numbers in place. If you look just at Highland in 2017 and Highland in 2018, there's significant growth there. From a state perspective, it's really a very different test. It was a three-day test in 2017. It was a two-day test in 2018. You know, what the impact of that, you know, it's hard. It's a little bit of apples and oranges there. But I still feel, I still feel good about it. You know, it's good to have them, them going up. You know, this year will be the first year, really, in about five years, that there doesn't seem to be any really significant changes from the year before. Like this, this will, this test this year should look a lot like the test last year, and so we should be able to do some better comparisons of the results of that material. So I, I'm encouraged by our ELA scores. So now what I'd like you to do is to go through and do the same thing in math. So math's a little bit more all over the place in Ulster County. And I just remembered that I misspoke myself on the ELA. ELA, we're actually second pretty much across the board. It's math and three through five, or, and three through five that were first in almost every, every category when you, when you look at just the three through five. So I'm still very proud of what we're doing in ELA because I think we've seen tremendous growth. But, but we're really, the math work is, is going well. Middle school needs a lot of work in math.
That's why it's so, the data's so troubling, because they're at the top in elementary.
I know.
And then you see that inverted in middle school.
Yeah, and I, you know, we, we keep talking about the work that we're doing.
Absolutely.
The benchmarks with all that. I do think there is, you know, and I don't want to blame the refusals necessarily. I do think as you move through middle school, the students might place less importance on those tests and showing what they know how to do. There are aspects of it. I, I, again, I don't know that we would call it flipped in the really, the first way that we did flipped, where you, they recorded their lessons and had them at home and doing, but they're certainly doing blended work at the middle school. You know, as we've gone through, that's part of what we're refining and looking at. You know, when do we need straight up direct instruction? When can we have it be a little bit more self-directed? I, I do, we are having that conversation on a, on a weekly, in some cases daily basis. So, so we're continuing to work. I have, as I mentioned, I've done this, we did this, I did the same exercise, a little bit more in-depth with the entire administrative cabinet, and then I also did it with all of our instructional councils, all our grade level coordinators and department chair people. That's started to generate some good conversation. The expectation was that they would take it back to their grade level department and start looking more specifically at their, at their own, own grade level. So we do continue to look at this. I'm hoping, you know, we have, we did see an increase in the number of students who took the test last year. I'm hoping we continue to see that number increase. The governor still has not signed the legislation that passed, completely decoupling ADPR from state assessments. Commissioner this morning didn't seem to have any inside information about when that was going to happen. She seemed to believe it, it would happen. We're not really sure what the, what the holdup is. I think that will help with our number of students to take the test as well. But, you know, I, I have to, especially that ELA information, I am very proud of the work our teachers are doing. And I'm very proud of the work our, our teachers are doing in math. And we're, we're continuing to look at the middle school.
So is there any conversation looking at the, the gaps, looking at students of color?
Yes.
The late big gaps between students of color of both math and ELA. So is there any conversation about how to?
Yeah, so one of the things, and this is something that I've been kind of rolling around in my head, but now we're really going to get started with, is a team of administrators, one coming to building, as well as myself and Patrick, are going to go to a diversity and inclusivity training on April fourth in Albany. It's put on by the, by NISCUS as a start to that conversation as a whole district about how we talk about inclusivity and, and equity for all of our students and, and ways to sort of think about that. One of the things I didn't mention, but we have looked at, was, you know, last year, we did the entire, with the entire district, we did the book study on economically disadvantaged. And our numbers improved in that area. And the continuing conversations that I'm hearing and the points that teachers are bringing up to me, it, it made an impact on the way teachers think about what they're presenting and how they're doing things. So my hope is moving forward that we can have similar types of conversations and, and learning on that topic. So that, that will be something we're looking at for next school year.
So one thing I just wanted to, more, more handouts. We talked about just making some changes in our form for tenure candidates. So from Carly, this is the form that had been used a few years ago. So was there any other information, just, you know, I want to give you what you want to see. So in addition to this, was there anything else that you wanted that's not on the tenure recommendation forms? You mentioned a picture. Did you want a picture of candidates? Someone mentioned that.
That was part of our, I think, I think I had, had, had their extracurricular activities in the district. I'm not sure if that's all necessary, but they, they're a little bit.
Yes.
Probably maybe not, not picture, but seeing them in attendance, I wonder if they recognize that. That's a huge, that's a huge thing.
I'd like to see what else, I'd like to see if they're doing any extracurricular.
Right, yep.
What other value adds, okay, that was on there. Usually the principal speaks to that.
Yes. What about attendance? Yep. Okay, all right. Wanted to get that. So Sarah mentioned, I do want to thank not only the board, but the whole community for the incredible support we had for the Ed Foundation's snowball this year. It really was just a great community event. We raised about thirteen thousand dollars, which is, yeah, about, four, between four and five thousand more than the, the average that they've been raising. So really a tremendous event. And all goes back to the students. So we did give out that night five teacher grants for teachers to do these great innovative projects with their students. We're, we're meeting next week, and we'll be looking at, you know, perhaps having, you know, a fall grants and then spring grants. So we have, we have two sets of grants next year. The, the presentations were all just, you know, they're very inspiring in different ways. You know, the presentation that I'm giving for all the recipients, so that was just a home run. A lot of great prizes. My, my goodness, my wife only bought one thing this year, so that helps. I'm not sure how many cutting boards one person could use, but.
Always need more cutting.
I guess so. So I spoke on the Monday message last night. It was about, I want to revisit that, and I'll talk about it again next week. It's internet safety, so you can't stress this enough for our students, but also, and certainly for the adults. Because we, we can get lazy when we're using the internet and our devices, and that's not good. We need to set the example. So again, keep your personal information professional and limited. So, you know, don't put personal info, valuable information. So, you know, don't put personal info, applicable information out there. And, you know, when, when you have your different, your different accounts, you know, it shouldn't be, you know, something inappropriate, because when you're applying for colleges, you don't want, you know, banjo at, you know, hotbody at Highland.com. You know, no one wants to read that, and it's not appropriate, because you're trying to apply for a college or for a job. Colleges and prospective employees look you up too, and they're going to see what's out there. So, you know, keep your privacy settings on, be careful of that, because there's always hackers out there looking to, looking to do bad things. Practice safe browsing, make internet connection, make sure your connection's secure. Be careful what you download, choose strong passwords. You know, this was an issue even within the district. Make sure you have strong passwords, you know, keep that password private and change the password. Don't have the same password for everything in your life. Though I know it gets difficult. I might even be violating that one, Mr. Bro. Your online purchases, make sure they're from secure sites. We're all buying things online. Unfortunately, that's bad news for the malls, but it's true. And, you know, make sure you're getting from reputable sites. Be careful what you post. We tell this not only to students, we tell to the staff. You know, be careful what you post, you know, not necessarily adults, but we can serve as an example to the students. But don't be putting things up there that you wouldn't want someone else to see. Meeting people online can be a great thing, but for students, for minors, you know, it can be a very dangerous thing. Be careful leaving it online. I was, you know, with my children, always, you know, let the kids, you know, my son at least, you know, they're playing games with other people online, and, you know, you have no idea where this person lives, what they're doing. And of course, keep your antivirus program up to date. Now, next Monday, here at high school, the entire school, in two assemblies, will have a program on internet safety, we'll bring you a speaker in. Then next Tuesday night, here at high school, six thirty P.M., is the parent night. So what parents need to know about internet safety. So I'll be, I'll be on the website, I'll be mentioning it again on the Monday message next Monday. So we want to, you know, get the parents' regards out there, so we're in this together with you. The spring sports did start, I don't know if Chris mentioned that, but despite the snow, spring sports have started. We're wrapping up, we had, we had a great season, you know, boys and girls, basketball, both made it to playoffs, and then we had some, Frank, why don't you give us a, can you use a quick synopsis?
Thank you. Yeah, real quick, we still have a winter team still participating. Our bowling team is still in the States, they go next week. We are the only small school in section nine, so last year and this year, they all qualified. They go for Buffalo, so they're going up this weekend. I've been here since the fall, I should say, the winter of 2014. This winter season, competition-wise, was probably the best that we had overall. Both our varsity basketball teams were successful. Even our, some of our JV teams had pretty good years. We had two wrestlers who qualified for the States. One was Joe Stacey's son, Matty, who ended up placing fifth at the States. And then we had another wrestler with him, and then two, two girls qualified for the States in gymnastics. I'll give you that information when we finish up our winter season with the scholar-athlete teams and everything else, so that'll all be in that report. One thing I do want to say, that we had our coaches meeting last week, and I was just putting together information, trying to figure things out. Right now, at Highland, which is a Class B school, which is not a big school, we offer twenty-six varsity sports. We offer six JV, we offer fourteen modified, which is a lot for our district. And we also have two clubs. Two clubs would be fall cheerleading, and then this year, we offered boys volleyball in the winter. They got together maybe six, six times on Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday night. So we offer a lot. Our spring season did start yesterday at the varsity and JV level. Our numbers for baseball and softball at the high school level are low. We could be in danger of not having fielding JV teams for baseball and softball this year, if not this year, next year. The numbers just aren't there, coming up through the system of either Little League Babe Ruth or whatever it might be. I also want to thank Transportation and Kathy. I know I mentioned it at a cabinet meeting, but this year, from day one until now, Transportation Athletics has really worked well together with Elizabeth in your office. One thing I've noticed, you know, there's days I come here when school's leaving. And this year, in the winter, when we have a bus that's leaving for, you know, basketball game, wrestling, the bus is out there, and the bus driver is waiting for the kids. And it, which is good, because the bus driver's getting there early, and then the kids are gathering their stuff, getting on the bus, and going to their event. In the past, combination of different things, you know, we, it was a scenario where everybody's calling, where's the bus, where's the bus? We have not had that issue this year. It's worked well, and hopefully it'll continue. We do have a lot of trips for the spring, but as I said before, it's all condensed within four or five weeks. Although we did have a lot of snow, and we had some snow days, it really didn't affect our schedule. I think there was only one time it affected our schedule where we had to cancel something and move it to another date, so that, that worked out well. I believe that's it.
Yeah, and finally, I just want to also mention, you know, I know we're not, I'm sure we're not through all the snow events just yet, but working with Kathy McCollough and Pete Miller has been fantastic, and just the teamwork that we have in collaborating, because I mentioned before at the beginning of the snow season, that, you know, it's something, you have to have that information all gathered, and, you know, a decision has to be made prior to 5:00 A.M. So you can't hem and haw about it, it's one way or the other. So really, between the two of them, by the time I'm speaking on the phone with Pete, you know, he has all the information from Kathy, from, you know, because she's gotten it from the district, Pete's gotten it from other districts, and I've reached out to my superintendents. But it's really, it's a great team effort, and they did a fantastic job this year. So thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move on. The Board of Education, new business, school board candidate nominated petitions at every time of year again. Petitions for nominated candidates. The Office for Board of Education, Highland Central School District, are available at Central Office, between the hours of 8:00 A.M. and 4:00 P.M. Monday through Friday, with the exception of April 22nd, which is 5:00. And this year, we have two seats that are going to be vacant, they expire on June 30th. That's the term of Tom Miller and Sue Gilmore. The term of office is three years. In order to be considered for the candidate, the individual must be eighteen years of old, qualified voter, in Highland Central School District, and able to read and write. They must also have been a resident of the district for one year prior to the election, which this year is May 21st, 2019. Completed petitions with the signature of twenty-five qualified district voters must be filed with the clerk of the district, no later than 5:00 P.M. on Monday, April 22nd. If you have any questions, they contact the district office or the district clerk. And so hopefully, we have candidates that are willing to enter into Board of Education. Ulster County School Board meeting, it's just an FYI, this will be held Thursday, March 14th, at 6:00 P.M. Please RSVP to our superintendent or the district clerk.
You guys?
I'll be there.
Okay. And you can try and let them know, thank you.
Anything on their old business?
One item for old business. Went to the middle school and attended parent-teacher conferences, and I was real happy to see that in the art room, our teachers are firing up pottery. And that piece of equipment has been hooked up, so I was very excited.
I couldn't say what it did.
How do you, K-I-L-N? But I was very, I was thrilled. Got hooked up about a month ago, and, you know, it's already in use, making a difference.
Good progress there.
Thank you.
Anyone else for new business, anything for the good welfare of the district?
I have a question. Frank, from the modified LaFrost, girls, boys, how are the numbers looking?
Signups, the girls was a little lower, I think it was around thirteen. The boys was sixteen. That starts next Monday, so we'll see physically how many students are there. But right now, the numbers were there. And with that said, the baseball and softball at that level are pretty much what they were last year. So I guess that's a good thing, because now we're, you know, it's not taking away. But we'll see once practice starts where it ends up.
Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. Close public comment. Need a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for discussion of contracts. Motion by Neil, sent by Mike. Favor, close, so carry. Good night, everyone.